Everybody can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Can we have a roll call?
Mr. Ekman?
Here.
Mr. Kessler?
Here.
Ms. Coughlin?
Here.
First order of business is the election of officers for this calendar year. So, does anyone want to make a motion?
Can I make a motion to recommend Jeffrey Ekman as Chair?
Thank you. Second?
I will second the motion.
Okay. Kelly?
Ms. Coughlin?
Aye.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Ekman?
Yes. And election of a Vice Chair. Any motions on that?
I can make a motion.
Okay. For Greg Kessler.
For Greg Kessler, for Vice Chair of the Committee.
And I will second that.
Ms. Coughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Ekman?
Yes. Okay, and finally, a approval of the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
And I'll second that.
Ms. Coughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Mr. Ekman?
Yes. Okay, so the next order of business is approval of the minutes, but since we just received those, we're going to postpone that until the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. So then, the next order of business is the public hearing. Before I go into the public hearing, I'd like to just make an announcement, and that is, as you can see, there are only three of us here tonight. This is a quorum, and it takes three of us to vote to approve any decisions. With that said, I will ask each of the petitioners if they would like to continue with this meeting tonight, or if you'd like to postpone for another month and then come back when hopefully there's five of us, because as it stands now, if one of us votes contrary to your preference, the motion will not carry. So, the Governor's Plaza Honda Dumpster. Is anyone here representing them? Okay, would you like to continue with the meeting tonight? Okay, great. And for the Silver Spring House, is anyone here representing them?
Yes.
Would you like to continue with the meeting tonight?
Yes, please.
Okay. Duly noted. So, at this time, we will open up the public hearing. The first order of business is Sims 2000-01, Governor's Plaza Honda Dumpster. Let's see, can we hear from staff?
Yes, good evening. Brian Snyder, Mechanic Planning and Development Services Administrator. You should have a copy of the staff report for this case. This is a final development plan modification. There's a long zoning history on this site. This is currently the Honda E- or the Honda, King's Honda. Sorry, new location since they moved out of King's Auto Mall and on the other side of Field Turtle, which is now in Sims Township. The final development plan for that was approved several years ago that allowed the connection of two former Big Box Developments into one building that is now the Honda E- or the Honda, King's Honda Building. The request tonight is simply to expand the existing dumpster enclosure area behind the building. There was two dumpster areas that were left over from the previous tenants. The proposal is to expand the one to the east and provide new fencing and gates around that area, as are shown in your packet. The only issue staff identified with this is that the fences that they're proposing are seven feet, eight inches tall instead of seven feet. Seven feet is the maximum. It looks like the seven-foot fencing was installed eight inches up off the ground, which makes it seven feet, eight inches. It appears that that was installed in error. It wasn't approved that way as part of the final development plan modification. They're proposing to match the existing fencing with the new fencing. So, it is up to this commission to decide whether you want to allow them to keep the seven foot, eight inches and continue that on, or to lower the existing fencing and lower the proposed fencing to the seven feet to match the zoning resolution. The only other issue that we found was there's another dumpster enclosure for the other building that does not have any gates on it, and as part of this, the commission may want to require gates on the other dumpster enclosure as well. That is all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Brian.
Is there any reason they can't do the seven feet?
I don't see why, no.
And is the reason for putting the fencing around the other one is just for an aesthetic?
There is a fence around the other one. It just doesn't have a gate. And it faces towards Governor's Way, so you can see it from the road. And so, you may want to require them to put a fence on that while they're doing the fencing around the new enclosure.
And if there wasn't a gate on it, it could be open?
It is currently open all the time.
Right, but if we put it, if they put a gate on it, it would be closed?
In theory, yes.
It should be closed.
Should be closed, yes.
Rather than having contents spilling out of the thing.
Correct. That's the purpose of having the gate, yes.
Yes, which I would think we should probably require. Okay.
Any other questions for Brian? Okay, Brian, you can sit. We'll hopefully reserve the right to call you back up if there's any other questions. For everybody who's here tonight, we're now going to hear from the, thank you for joining us this evening. We're now going to hear from the applicant, and they may give us a presentation if they have any. And we'll follow that up with an opportunity for members of the community to come up to the dais and to make any kind of statements for, against, otherwise. To make things run smoothly, I'm going to ask that we first hear from anybody who's supportive of the application. Then we'll hear from any neutral parties, and then we'll follow that up with anybody who's against the application. Because there's a lot of you here tonight, and in the interest of time, I'm going to ask that everybody limit their statements to no more than two minutes, other than the applicant. And Kelly, if you can kind of keep track of that for us, that would be great. So, and again, when you come up to the dais, if you could state your name and your address for the record. Okay, so with that said, the applicant, please come forward.
Good evening. My name is Vince Di Stefano. I'm with Archall Architects. Our address is 49 East 3rd Avenue, Columbus, Ohio. So, in the package, and as Brian so wonderfully explained, we're proposing putting new fencing around the existing dumpster enclosure to the east side of the existing property, matching the height of the existing sort of CMU enclosure that's there with new steel posts and wood-sided fencing. If required, we could certainly bring this down to the seven foot, as noted in the zoning resolution, and you know, you could look at adding a new gate to the secondary one if needed. Here to, you know, answer any questions as necessary, and you know, thank you for your time.
Is it on high on both? Is it seven foot, eight inches?
Both of them are seven foot, eight, existing CMU masonry enclosures.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so again, if anybody is opposed to this change, please come up to the dais and state your name and address. Okay, if anybody is neutral, is anybody in favor of it? You guys are all just here to watch the election here tonight? Okay, with that said, the public forum is now closed. We will discuss this amongst ourselves and maybe ask some follow-up questions.
My only thoughts are to keep it within the seven feet and put a gate in front of the other one, and it's staff recommended.
Right.
Pretty straightforward and simple on that from our perspective, but I'm open to opposing the points.
Yeah, I think that the only other thing that I have concern about, if you look at how the current configuration is set up, with tires kind of, for lack of a better word, strewn about, I do have a concern that they may be, you know, if the storage area gets overfilled, that it's going to spill over into the adjacent parking spots, which I think you can see up there on, just to the right of the dumpster. So, I might make a stipulation that all storage needs to be contained within those structures and nothing on the outside of that structure.
That's fine.
I'd agree with that. My concern about stipulating there'd be a second gate is to keep it enclosed so that things aren't just spilling out outside the dumpster. I don't have a problem with the extra eight inches, but I'm new to this committee.
Well, I would say as a general rule, we don't like to, we would like to keep it standard. I mean, if there was some significant reason why it can't be that way, then I'm okay with that, too.
I agree.
All right. And anyone like to make a motion?
I'm happy to take a stab at it.
All right.
With respect to the seven feet, do I need to spell that, or is that just within?
Yeah.
All right.
Sorry, I saw what spelled it.
I would like to make a motion to modify the final development plan for case Sims 2000-01, Governor's Plaza Honda Dumpster, to allow the expansion of the dumpster enclosure and trash handling area behind the existing dealership building with the following: one, the fence height being a maximum of seven feet high; two, stipulation that any debris must be maintained within the enclosure; and the third, that we require a gate on both dumpster enclosures.
Kelly?
Is there a second to that motion?
Oh, yeah.
I'll second that.
Thank you for keeping us honest. Still new to this game.
Mr. Ekman?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Coughlin?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Thank you very much. You're welcome to stick around, or you can leave. Okay. The second case for tonight is Sims 2023-1, Silver Spring House 4. Again, we'll invite Mr. Snyder up to the dais to explain this one.
Brian Snyder, Mechanic Planning and Development. Again, you should have a copy of, this time, the Regional Planning Commission's staff report for the zone change. This case is a, it's a zone change from a single-family residence to EE planned residence with retail. It is also a major revision to the existing EE planned residence, which surrounds the existing restaurant. The difference between a zone change and a major revision is really just the naming. Both of them are zone change processes. If this case were approved, the previous EE planned residence district would be replaced with this case, and that is the purpose of that, to limit the potential for there being two different approval sites with two different sets of conditions that don't work together. So that is the reason that the request was made in this fashion. So the entire site is under consideration again. The specific request that is being made in this case is to to tear down the existing single-family house north of the existing restaurant parking lot and to replace the existing house with an expanded parking lot. The, that's the portion of the property that is currently zoned, single-family residence, and that will be the expanded double-E area of the site. Zone changes in the state of Ohio and in Sims Township specifically are required to go through a detailed process. The first step is required to, well, in this case was requested to go through the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission for a recommendation. The zoning commission is required to hold a public hearing. That's tonight's meeting. And at the end of this, you will be making or being requested to make a recommendation to the Sims Township trustees. The township trustees have the final authority on zone changes in the state of Ohio. So, there's a long zoning petition history for this site. It started out as a non-conformal use. It predated the adoption of zoning in Sims Township. There have been several cases that have come before the trustees in the past. The most recent was approved in 2020. Sorry, the most recent modification was approved in 2020 by this commission for an expanded building. That actually was not constructed, and the applicant came back in 2022 for a reduced building. So last year, if you recall, the smaller building addition was approved on the north side of the existing, what was the existing building. I believe that addition is under construction. The proposal is to add 125 parking spaces north of the existing parking lot. There are no other changes proposed to the rest of the site, the restaurant building, or the existing parking lot south of that line. Obviously, the curb lines would change to allow access to the expanded parking area to the north. So, an additional 125 parking spaces would allow for a total of 273 parking spaces on the restaurant property, and that is not counting the parking spaces that they have an agreement for with the office development to the east. The applicant along the northern property line is proposing a 17-foot buffer with a berm, privacy fence, and landscaping. On the outside of the privacy fence, it's facing towards the adjacent residential properties. The streetscape buffer along would be continued along Snyder Road to the northern property line, and the detention basin would be expanded. The existing detention basin would be expanded to account for the additional stormwater. No other changes are proposed to the site. Prior to submitting the application, the applicant was required to hold a staff review conference, which is an informal meeting that was held in December of 2022. In addition to all the representation from the applicant, the staff members that were present in Sims Township, officials that were also present, four citizens attended the meeting. The issues and concerns that were raised included buffering between the parking lot and homes to the north, parking in front of the adjacent office buildings to the east, and the existence of a volleyball court on an adjacent property to the north that encroaches onto the subject property. Traffic and lighting were also briefly discussed. Excuse me. The staff report for zone changes, the Regional Planning Commission, considers first land use plan consistency. In this case, the land use plan for the portion of the property where the double-E would be expanded is listed as single-family residence on the adopted land use plan. The rest of the property is neighborhood retail. So the double-E complies with the neighborhood retail land use designation, but the proposed double-E does not comply with the single-family residence designation of the single-family home. Staff reviewed the text of the Sims Township land use plan and found no text that specifically references this site. Therefore, staff found that the development was not consistent with the adopted land use plan. There was a motion recommended to the Regional Planning Commission to find that consistency was required and not achieved, which requires the Regional Planning Commission to recommend denial of the development. This motion actually failed at the Regional Planning Commission by a vote of three to one. Similarly, they had their minimum quorum and were required to act unanimously. However, due to the Regional Planning Commission bylaws, a lack of affirmative votes for consistency results in a finding of inconsistency and a recommendation of denial. So the Regional Planning Commission recommended denial of the development based solely on compliance with the land use plan. The rest of the staff report was not discussed at that meeting, but we'll go over briefly here, obviously. There's no issue with thoroughfare plan compliance. As far as zoning compliance goes, they have submitted a lighting plan in compliance with the zoning resolution. So the lighting would meet the levels at the property lines. They are asking for an eight-foot variance on the boundary buffer width requirement. 25 feet is required along the northern property line, northern and eastern property lines. And they're providing 17 feet along the northern property line. So they're asking for an eight-foot variance for that. As I stated before, they do, they are adding a mound, which is not required, and a privacy fence along with trees and shrubs. So the fence is not required, and the mound is not required. Staff found that, given the fact that they're adding a mound and fencing along with the required landscaping, that the 17-foot buffer with those additional components would probably be a better screen than the required 25-foot buffer with just the landscaping alone that would meet the zoning resolution. So staff could support that request with the additional privacy fence and mounding. The landscape plan that was submitted did not show to require landscaping along the eastern portion of the buffer, and this is just a small portion behind the detention basin on the east side of the property. There's, I think, they didn't show the right number of trees or any shrubs. Staff actually finds that since they're putting a privacy fence along the northern property line, that they should also be required to put one along the eastern property line with the landscaping on the outside, similar to what they're showing along the northern. If that wraps around, staff would find that that would be appropriate. The volleyball net I mentioned earlier, there's a property to the north that actually has a volleyball net set up such that part of the area that is needed to play volleyball is on this adjacent single-family home that is proposed to be changed to retail. Staff has no issue with that staying. The applicant, or I'm sorry, the homeowner's asked that it be allowed to remain at the staff review conference. The plans have been changed since the staff review conference to allow, to show it and to allow that area to encroach into the buffer as requested by the homeowner. And then the only other thing that I have, there were, because this is replacing or would replace the existing EE for the existing restaurant, all of the conditions that were approved and variances that were approved for the Silver Spring House previously should be carried forward and modified as needed to reflect the changes that would occur if this plan were approved. So with that, the staff report does recommend denial based on the lack of consistency with the land use plan. There are a number of recommendations. Should the commission consider a recommendation of approval? And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
So, do you know, should we approve this? How many trees would need to be removed? And then how many trees would be replaced, you know, with the new?
I do not. I didn't know that there are some trees in the backyard of the existing house that would need to be removed, obviously for the parking lot. I don't know how many. And then I'm guessing that there's probably some that would need to be removed for the detention basin as well, but again, we don't have an existing tree survey on this property. One is not required. It was submitted as part of the zone change.
Okay. And then, I think, from my review of the images that I saw, it looks like there's a sidewalk that's along Kemper Road, but not one that's along Snyder Road. Is that correct?
Oh, correct.
Okay, and so would this change necessitate a sidewalk to go up Snyder Road from Kemper all the way to the property line?
It does, and I believe that they're showing the addition of that sidewalk on their proposed plan, which would make it required. But staff also, in the discussion about the conditions, staff also pointed out that currently they were required to provide an East Kemper Road sidewalk, which was installed, but now Snyder Road sidewalks are required. So we're recommending that if it were approved, that the condition requiring sidewalks along East Kemper just be changed to require them along Snyder. And that was all the issue.
Okay.
We recommend this zone change to the trustees. Are there any limitations on what it can be used for? I mean, it's currently being suggested for a parking lot. Could it be used for any other development in the future?
It could be asked to be used for any other development in the future, but that's the same for all properties. It would have to go through a process. There would have to be additional public hearings. Depending on what they're using it for, it could even be required to go through a full-blown zone change again, like the major revision that's being considered tonight for the rest of the restaurant. At the very least, they would have to have a public hearing for a final development plan modification before this commission, which would notify all of the neighbors again.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Brian?
Just about the portion of the eastern property line, which is 135 feet in length, requires six canopy trees and 27 shrubs. But that is not part of the plan at this point. Is that correct? Am I reading that correctly?
Correct. That's, I believe that's the area where they showed three trees and no shrubs.
Right, but it really does require six trees and 27 shrubs. The applicant is proposing a privacy fence within the northern buffer yard in lieu of this shrub requirement. So in other words, we would have to include in this a provision for more buffer or more trees on that eastern side.
Yes, and I apologize if I did say that there were shrubs. There are some small shrubs that are being proposed around the volleyball court area, but there aren't shrubs because the privacy fence does eliminate the need for the shrubs. The purpose of the shrubs in the boundary buffer is to block headlights, and so the fence accomplishes that by itself. But yes, you would have to require the boundary buffer along the eastern property line to meet the requirements of the zoning resolution to get the trees required. And then also, if you wanted a privacy fence, you would have to require that as well.
As well as?
Yep.
Okay.
On the adjacent volleyball area, the staff stated that the parties have agreed to allow the volleyball area to encroach upon. So what does that mean? That the property will still be the Silver Spring House property, but they won't develop that little corner in such a manner that would encroach on the volleyball?
Correct. On the landscape plan and the grading plan, you can see that they've, they're proposing, the mound that they're proposing would come down, and the trees, that's where they're proposing bushes instead of trees, that are intended to allow the little corner of the grass area to be used for volleyball. I will say that's a first for me, but...
I just have a question about Section 328, where within the paragraph it says, "The parking lot could potentially be reconfigured to reduce the number of parking spaces, removed by providing the entire width of the boundary buffer, i.e. 25 feet instead of 17."
Correct.
Or the northernmost row of parking could be reoriented to increase the width of the boundary by a few additional feet. So we could request that that, and that would not mean that we necessarily lose the advantage of a berm. I mean, we could still require that, couldn't we?
Yes, you could.
Okay.
So to be clear, we could still require the 25 feet, the berm, the fence, the, all of that, which, I don't know, maybe that's overkill, or maybe it's not, but, you know, it would, it would still stipulate, you know, stay within the zoning requirements of the 25 feet?
Yes, you would essentially be asking them to provide the boundary buffer as required and additional screening that you felt was necessary. But that is completely up to the commission.
Anything else? Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Again, as before, we will ask the applicant to come up to present their case. Take as much time as necessary. State your name and your address. Once that's complete, we'll ask people who are for the project to come forward, people who are neutral, and anyone who's against will come in last. And then, if the community members that want to speak come up, state your names, addresses, and keep your statements to about two minutes or so. And Kelly, if you can monitor that. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Brian Dahl with Cincinnati United Contractors. I am representing the Silver Spring House at 7143 East Kemper Road, Cincinnati, Ohio 45249. I, after reviewing the staff report, a couple of things that Brian mentioned I wanted to address. One of the things is, yes, we are continuing the sidewalk down all of Snyder Road down to the... to the end of the property. And then regarding the landscaping, I think there was a mistake on the landscaping plan. We do plan on putting the required trees and shrubs on that north, I guess it's northeastern part of the property between the parking lot and the detention area. And then also, if the fence is found to be something that you guys want to put on there, we would be not objectionable to that, as we do have a fence to block the, you know, headlights towards the northern boundary, and we could do that on the eastern boundary as well. So I just wanted to mention that. With that, I think Brian's covered most everything. Do you have any particular questions that you have for me?
Any questions?
Is there any intent to develop the property beyond the parking lot?
No.
So as far as you know, the intent is to, as long as Spring House is there, it will remain a parking lot and only a parking lot?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you know about, so I had asked Brian, and he didn't know, about the number of trees that would be required to be removed and how that compares with the number of trees that are required to be added or maintained?
I don't have an accurate count of the existing trees that are there. It's quite wooded. But in order to grade the property adequately, we have to remove almost all the trees, and then whatever's going to be put back will be new.
Okay. So how many trees in total? Because there was trees on the east and trees on the north side and shrubberies and...
There should be a total count in that landscape plan.
It says, "Six-foot-tall privacy fence and 19 trees." That would be on the north. And then there's no provision for, on the east, but you said you would be willing to put, and, where did I see that?
Have you all put together a plan for all the trees and shrubberies in terms of what kind of trees and...
Yeah. If you go to, if you actually, if you mind scrolling to that last page, page 5 to 5, page 5 to 5 has the landscape plan on it and should have the count in there.
Yeah. 1.5 canopy trees and 20 shrubs per 100 linear feet.
Yeah, but it is awful small for me.
The applicant is proposing only three trees and no shrubs within the buffer yard on the east side, and that was a concern I had.
So I'll take this tale stuff real quick for you. So as far as the canopy trees, we have a total of 27 canopy trees, it looks like. And then as far as evergreen trees, we have a total of 11 evergreen trees. And then regarding shrubs, we have a total of seven, let's see if I got the right, 16 plus 34, 89 shrubs.
Is that the right one?
Yes, you got the right one. Thank you.
I have a question about the number of parking spaces required for a restaurant of that seating capacity. I'm just trying to understand. It says the proposed 273 parking spaces exceeds the requirements of the zoning resolution, which would only be 108.
Right.
That's a great deal more parking spaces than required for a restaurant.
It is. And this has been a point of contention throughout the history of this project. Several times, boards have mentioned that, yeah, your parking count requirement, this is what it is, and we comply with it, but it doesn't seem to be adequate. And so I know that's been a problem in the community for a long time. I actually mentioned that in my letter at the end of the staff report, if you want to read that. Basically, what it comes down to is the culture of the patrons that visit there. It's not where a group of people carpool in one, you know, particular car, you know, in droves of four or five or six. People are going there to meet family, friends, business associates, to where they're driving individually instead of together. So if you figure, okay, let's just say this has 400-something seats, well, if, let's just say everybody, average, just has two people in their car, that's already 200 spots you'd need. So, and that's not always the case. A lot of people are driving individually. So this parking is justified in the fact of the way the patrons visit this restaurant. And hence is why we've had problems in the community with people parking places they shouldn't, on streets that they shouldn't, and it's just, it's much better for the community if we can get them off those streets and onto this parking lot.
So how many seats are there in the restaurant?
431.
It's on page four.
Yeah.
How many square meters is the building total? Just curious.
Uh...
Can't read it.
See, about 9,550.
If the parking, if the zone is approved and the parking lot is built, what effect, if any, does that have on the current agreement with the adjoining business, the condominium?
Yeah, good question. None whatsoever, because the access easements are already existing, staying in place, and we're not modifying those access easements.
I have a question about whether you, the Silver Spring House, would be flexible in the amount of space the parking lot would take, like downsizing what you are asking for, to give more buffer for the homes behind it, more, that's a very treed area and provides an awful lot of aesthetic appeal to the neighborhood because of the trees. I, you know, and I'll be very frank here, I live in that neighborhood. I think that aesthetically, I would like to see most of those trees, as many of those trees stay as could. So I'm just wondering, are you flexible in terms of, I see the need for the parking, I get what you're saying about people coming one in a car a lot. But if you reduce the size of the parking lot, would you be still, would that be feasible to you?
Yeah, actually, I have had some discussions with the owners today, and they are willing to look at possible different options that could increase the buffer and not sacrifice as many parking stalls.
And not sacrifice as many trees?
Yeah. I can't guarantee that because of the, again, that would be something I have to work out in the civil engineering phase for the grading of the site. So when you grade a whole site to get it to drain properly, the elevations, you know, your tree that's existing may be up too high, may be down too low, so that's what happens when you have to masquerade a site. So I can't guarantee that some of those existing trees will stay. Not that we wouldn't want to save them because they're beautiful trees.
Yeah.
It's just logistically, I don't know if that could all be done. That was something that we'd have to look into.
Yeah, kind of along that line, I'm thinking, and again, there's no schematic of what this might look like with the 25-foot berm as opposed to the, the 25-foot buffer as opposed to the 18-foot proposed buffer. But I think that one might be able to make the argument that that extra space would allow for additional trees to be planted and, you know, maybe create, you know, an additional barrier.
Well, I actually did have some time today. I kind of anticipated this off of some comments I've received from neighbors. And I have something I whipped up today, if you'd like to see it. I have a digital file. If you like, give it to them and we can put it in there if you'd like to see it.
I'm not opposed to it. Go ahead.
Sure. Let's have a look.
Do you care to try to zoom up as much as possible on the green and gray area? So in this instance, instead of, let's focus on the northern property first. The northern part of the property, we used to have 90-degree parking there, and instead of the 90-degree parking, we are showing parallel parking. So what we've done is, in essence, reduced the, I should say, increased the buffer yard from the 17-foot to the 25-feet. So now we have the zoning-required buffer yard there. And I think we have about 12 or 13 parallel parking spaces along there, so the lights, you know, technically wouldn't shine directly into that fence, even without a fence. We'd have the continuous fence across there, and then we'd put landscaping on the other side of the fence to even enhance the screening. And then on the eastern side, what we've done is we've shifted the parking a little bit further into the detention basin, and we're going to massage that and change that a little bit. But we still have, I believe, that dimension, 60, yeah, 60-foot-three feet between the parking and the property line. And again, I'm showing that fence curving around the side of that. So basically, the entire parking lot would be screened by a fence. To the northern, it'd be with a fence plus a berm and landscaping, and then to the eastern, it would be the detention pond with also landscaping plus the fence. So this was a solution we thought would be a good compromise to increase the buffer, make it the zoning-required buffer. And then we have way more on the other side, the 60-foot, than what's required. And then this would screen visually and also kind of still maintain some of the parking spots, not lose all that whole row of parking spots.
How many spots are indicated in that version?
That is 100 and, let's see, 116 new, I believe.
Instead of 125.
So, well, actually, what it came down to it is, I think I lost, when I netted out, a total loss of eight stalls.
Okay.
So however I did it, I netted out the loss of eight stalls.
And you're still able to do, the volleyball court is...
Yes, and actually, I don't have to move it now. Before, we were moving it slightly, and now, in this instance, I don't have to move it at all.
Is there a requirement for a setback off Snyder Road of a...
I'm sure there is.
...number of feet?
It's 10 feet.
Just 10?
And it does, it is right at the 10-foot buffer.
It matches what's currently there. The current parking lot is 10 feet from the right away.
The fencing, is it, you said that it is continuing, so there's no, there's no slats or anything where light can leak through it?
Right, it would be an opaque fence.
Okay.
Unfortunately, though, this doesn't really save the treed aspect of the property as it currently...
I didn't have time to do that today. That's just something I changed today.
Yeah, like, it really just gives a little bit more, especially on the eastern side, but it doesn't really, the existing property had so many trees on it, it's really not helping that at all.
I don't think that it's, I mean, that whole property was basically treed.
It is treed.
It's going to be leveled.
That's true.
So there's only, I mean, that's, you know, I think the only thing that we can ask is that more trees go on the periphery of the property line, but you're not going to put trees in the middle of the parking lot, so...
No, no, or you just make the parking lot smaller.
Yeah, but I think there is some value in understanding what those trees are, the size of them, how they, you know, they're, both their aesthetic as well as their sound barrier, as well as their light barrier effects from that. And obviously, you know, evergreens are going to provide year-round coverage, you know, but...
And that's why we proposed 11 along that northern property, for that reason, the evergreens.
Right. You know, to call Viburnum shrubs is probably, I mean, in my mind, a little bit of extension, you know, other than aesthetics, I don't know that that really does much for the, you know, property, but...
It's more for low-line visibility, obstruction, is what it's for.
Yeah.
As far as berm, can you give me an idea in terms of height?
I think we have currently like a three-foot-high berm, I believe. Yeah, about a three-foot-high berm, average.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thanks for your time.
Okay, so now we are going to open it up to the community, so if there's anybody here in support of the proposed revisions, please come forward and state your name and Seeing none, if there's anybody who's neutral and has just some opinions they'd like to share, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, if there's anybody who's against, please come forward, state your name and address, and again, if you can limit your time to two minutes.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Tim Burke from the Manley Burke Law Firm in downtown Cincinnati, 225 West Court Street. I'm here today on behalf of Colin Rademecker of 8343 Padilla Court, Padilla Lane. I would appreciate some flexibility on the two-minute time. I will be brief, but I don't think I can get this in in two minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Speak quick.
The proposal in front of you, and it's changing as we speak, is still really for a massive increase in parking on this property. And there's never been a real explanation for why. Yes, they need some additional parking, but 125 or 118, why that? And one of the things that has not been discussed publicly is the fact that on December 31st, the Ohio Casino Control Commission issued a sports gaming host license to this restaurant. I think clearly, the anticipation is that that use will generate a considerably increased demand for parking. And one of the questions I think the township needs to address first is whether or not that's even a permitted use in the double E zone. Your zoning resolution says what's permitted in the double E, which is called a residential zone, what's permitted in the double E is only what is permitted in the E. And the E offers a variety of different things, seven types of residential, 32 types of consumer-type establishments, four banking, finance, or insurance uses, 13 uses that are described as a variety of services to individuals and families. None of those uses come close to defining a sports gambling parlor. It's not a permitted use under your zoning code. And I think that's something that needs to be discussed right off the top of this. I appreciate the efforts that are being made tonight to discuss modifications to the plan, and that's certainly appropriate. But it is also unfair to people who have been reviewing one set of plans and all of a sudden being presented with things tonight that are entirely... that are entirely different, and no one's had the opportunity to review those items. You have recommendations from the regional planning staff, who you hire to provide recommendations to you, against this proposal. The Rural Zoning Commission... I'm sorry, the Regional Planning Commission itself voted 3 to 1 to support a denial of this. I read the Regional Planning Commission's rules, and frankly, your own rules, a little differently. There was a quorum present at the Regional Planning Commission. They voted 3 to 1. Your rules clearly define three people to be a quorum and are clear on your ability to vote tonight, whether it's 2 to 1 or 3 to nothing. And that's how I read your rules. And I'd invite Jeff to take a look at those as well. And I can cite the rules if necessary. You've got various issues. And what you've said about the need to protect trees, I don't think it's as easy to say, "Well, they've got to tear them all down." I think that's one of the issues that ought to be explored further, to protect what's there and make them establish that it's not just a matter of putting a bulldozer on that site and stripping it. There's an opportunity to identify some trees that are deserving to be saved and take the opportunity to do that. And clearly, that's not been done tonight. Though I appreciate the fact that some effort has been made to address the concerns which the owner and the engineer have heard consistently from the neighbors. I do have a couple of specific questions that I would address to the commission, and I would ask that hopefully you will ask these questions as you deem it appropriate. Currently, along what is now the northern boundary of the property line, the existing parking lot, there is a concrete, about a three-foot-tall, concrete wall. And then on top of that wall is a privacy fence, not in particularly good shape. What's not clear is whether or not any of that will continue to exist. I don't know. I couldn't tell that from the plans as we reviewed them. Very little has been said about the fact that in creating all the impervious surface for the new parking lot, what's the impact going to be on the drainage basin? It's only been mentioned very, very briefly tonight. And it's not at all clear whether that detention basin is expanded, whether it remains the same, or how the drainage will be handled coming off of the new impervious surface. The other question that I think needs to be asked is particularly as this use, should it be determined to be legal of being a sports gaming hall? Are the hours of operation on the site going to change? None of those questions have been addressed. I don't think that you're in a position tonight to approve what's in front of you. Nor do I believe that it's fair to say, "Well, we're going to add things on the spot tonight." Because you haven't had a chance to review those. Nor has the community had the opportunity. I hope they have that opportunity. I think the best route tonight would be to reject the proposal that is in front of you and instruct the applicant to come back with a different plan that reduces parking, that does more to preserve trees, that addresses issues about what's the impact going to be of putting a sports gaming hall in that facility. Thank you, I appreciate your time.
One quick question for you, if I may. The residents that you're here on behalf of, does it abut the proposed property?
Yes, Mr. Roddimerke is on the east abutting to the site, both to the existing parking lot and to what would be new parking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anybody else?
May I? Please. I'm Richard Goldberg, I live at 8354 Jeanette Lane in Heartland. I've been... And I'll keep this to two minutes, and you can prompt me if I'm running toward the end. We've lived there for over 31 years, so I'm very familiar with the land use plan all around the neighborhood, particularly starting with Harper Station many, many years ago. My law firm and some of us were involved in the development and litigation of Harper Station. As a result of that, our goal was to try to keep the neighborhood as residential as possible. And we're able to block a Walmart-type store coming into that shopping center. Then we go onto the Kemper Road condos, the Lucky condos. I was a party to that litigation. And we did what we could, again, to preserve the residential nature of everything around it. Now we're at Silver Spring House wanting 125 more spaces. Silver Spring House is going to become an island in a sea of parking lots. 125 spaces, you've got lanes of travel in the parking lot. It's going to be huge. And it's not going to be very attractive. Those trees are coming down at Abut's Petrella, which is a beautiful street. I go down Petrella on occasion just to admire it. Our neighborhood's beautiful, and Heartland, Petrella's a beautiful neighborhood. But yet, you're going to have Silver Spring House surrounded by parking lots. They've got theirs in the front. They use the Kemper Road condos, pretty much whatever amount of spaces they've got. They also use their employees are parking at CHCA. So, they've got parking lots all over the place and spaces all over the place that they use. I understand that the spaces they had per code were sufficient just with what they had in front of the restaurant. That's what I've been told every time we appear before you or the trustees. But now they want 275... They want a total of 275, 125 more spots. And my calculations, that's almost tripling what the code says is available. So, the bottom line is, there's three issues, and I'm almost done. I don't think this lot is compatible with the neighborhood or the residential character. And that's the most important thing. Number two, obviously, it would have an effect on property values that are contiguous and further out. And if Petrella property values are affected, I think they're somewhat comped to Heartland, our values could be affected. And three, nobody's talked about the traffic patterns with another 125 parking spots north on Snyder Road. So, I've seen the young adults that work at Silver Spring House crossing Snyder and from CHH to Silver Spring House. And it's dangerous sometimes. They don't go to the corner oftentimes, they run across the street. And there's some blind spots on Snyder in both directions. So, safety is another reason. For those three reasons, I think that this is not a good plan. I think that's why it was recommended to be denied by the Regional Planning Commission. And if there are no other questions, I respectfully ask that this motion be denied.
Thank you very much. Is anybody else... Come forward.
Hi, my name's Colin Roddimerke, I live at 8343 Petrella Lane. And my house, in my backyard, abuts right up to what I'll call Kate's old house, because Kate owned it. The reason that we were slow, you know, didn't have a lot of attendance at the last meeting is none of us got a letter. We didn't see any letter that said there was a meeting coming up, and if you want to, then please attend. So if you think we weren't interested, that's not true, because I can think and see it pretty well now, that we're real interested. This is a neighborhood. This is not a commercial piece of property. The commercial piece of property exists, but this one does not suit the bill for commercial. It's my opinion. If you take down the trees... Hey, I understand that if you get the stumps up, you have to regrade the whole thing. But those trees do do a number of different things. It blocks the noise from the highway. It sucks up all the wet water on that piece of property. That piece of property has sucked up two dead deer that have gotten stuck in the mud there. Does it affect me right now? No, but it does concern me where you're going to put this detention pond. Because I've seen a lot of detention ponds have to get redesigned. So, I don't want that water, because Kate's property is up here, and mine is down here. And that's the same with the rest of us. I think a few of us have more than one in some pond. This is totally off my... Rest of what I was looking at. The parking, since there has been an excess flow of parking allowed on Kemper Road between Lucky's buildings and Kemper Road parking, there really hasn't been parking on that strip of grass in front of Silver Spring House anymore. And there hasn't been as much parking on Petrella Lane, with the exception of, you know, a Friday night football game. So, you know, it really doesn't have a push to, you know, get any additional parking. Some of the things I am concerned about, if they get 125 new patrons in there, and these guys don't want to leave at 11 o'clock, are we going to get, you know, 12 o'clock, 1 o'clock time for having that, you know, restaurant open? I don't want to see them come back for permission to increase their hours.
It's been three minutes.
Okay. Anything final that you haven't already said?
Yeah, I do have a lot, but if you're going to, you know...
Look, I think there's a lot of homeowners that are probably also going to speak too, and hopefully they...
Okay.
Thank you very much.
My name is Kim Shillik, I live at 8309 Petrella Lane, which is right next to Kate's house. It's a little small of a house. Being on the corner, not only do I get noise pollution from 71, but I get it from Snyder, I get it from the school. And if you go by there, you'll see my wife planted a lot of plants around there. Nobody's really addressed the lighting situation, to my knowledge. So, if you've got that many more spaces, there's going to be light, and it's going to be directed towards our houses. Right? That's a problem. I mean, we have so much traffic in there right now, I can't even imagine what would happen with them exiting outside trying to make a left or a right turn. So I don't think anyone wants to cripple his business efforts. I think it's a wonderful place. He's been there, he's been there a long time. Did you ever anticipate it would go like this? So, he has grown like this, but we don't know... We've been around a long time, and future plans always change. So what happens to our property values if one day they decide to put another level and a half in the middle of that parking area? How's that going to affect parking areas? There'd be nothing we could do if they would own the property. So, again, I want him to succeed. He's got a great business there. But our property values are important to us. Thank you.
I'm Mark Steinhardt, I live in Heartland, E387 Chesney Lane. I am president of the HOA, but I'm speaking tonight totally as a resident, not in any official capacity. I've been to many meetings for Silver Spring House over the last several years. And I think you all will acknowledge, it's a repeating pattern of, "Well, we don't need any more parking. We have more than enough to get the expansion of number of seats. And now you got the number of seats, and now we need more parking." This is a yin and yang. It's what I call a death by a thousand cuts. In my opinion, and I respect your opinion about trees, but I'll add to that. This isn't about number of trees and berms, okay? Trees take a long time to grow, and they die. The lawsuit that Rich was talking about, I was a party to that, only one-third of the trees that Mr. Jeff Anderson planted still live today, that buffets Heartland from the development over there. And by the way, for the trees to even have a chance to live, somebody has to water them. And I know in Heartland, we've spent an incredible amount of coin on maintaining probably the most expensive berm in Simms Township, okay? And even those trees die, because it's very difficult. You have to run hoses, hundreds of feet, et cetera, okay? So, in my opinion, this isn't about trees, berms, volleyball nets, et cetera. I looked at the one chart you put up there before. It's basically a 50% increase in the footprint. And that's all mechanical. To your point, those... I don't know how those trees are, they're probably 50-years-old, the trees that you're talking about, Miss. They don't grow in one year, okay? So I think you need to take two steps back. Wow, about this gambling thing, I had no clue of that. I mean, oh my God, that's just going to be wonderful if that happens there. And so, I just want to see what the next expansion is where you have the gaming counter. So, anyway, that's where I'm at. I don't think it's anywhere close to being consistent with this. Thank you.
Anybody else?
David Vamaka, 8327 Petrella Lane. I'm in one of the houses in the northern boundary, I guess you'd call it. And what they're proposing... If they're going to do a burn, and say, three-foot, four-foot, that's all fresh ground. They want to put a fence on top of it. I worked for Besser Construction for like 40 years, so I know a little bit about construction, commercial. And if you're going to try to put a fence right now, their fence has fallen over from the wind. It's in concrete. It's a six-foot-high, looks like a wood fence. I don't think that fence would last unless it was drilled down, way down into the solid ground, you know, with the posts and stuff. Otherwise, there's nothing really going to support it when this big winds come along. I do not agree with a vinyl fence, I think was mentioned. If there was some fence put up, I would like them to investigate the best sound material, sound deadening. And on that note also, I mean, I'm glad you live in the neighborhood and you know the lot, because there's probably 40 to 50 trees in there, you know. It's solid trees, there's a lot falling down and everything. But springtime and summertime, it's pretty nice, you know. Right now, it looks terrible. It's all brown. But right now, the existing fence is, if you look standing there parking lot, of course, the gray goes down to the right. So the concrete wall is maybe eight-foot high at the right side, maybe three to four feet on the left side. Got a six-foot fence on top of that. It's pretty tall. I mean, it's in the middle, I'd say it's 10 feet tall. Now, I've been living there for 21 years in that house. Been in the neighborhood longer, had a lot of family in Petrella Lane. And I'm able to live with what's there now. You know, it's... I've got the trees, I've got the nice big fences I really don't see, it's nice and brown. It's sound and everything, you know, it's fine, really. I did it for 20 years, I love my backyard, because of what I have behind it. And if that goes away, you know, it's almost like they're kind of muscleless, like you get 25 feet with no burns, you know... I know you guys aren't going to approve that, but there would have to be some kind of fence or something for headlights and stuff like that. Losing the green space, it's just... It provides a lot, it soaks up a lot of water, there's a lot of water back there. You know, green space is great for a community, and that's what I really love about my house and my backyard and stuff. I have a lot more I could say, but I'll just stick to that.
Thank you very much. Anybody else?
Hi, my name is Evan Vamaka, I live at 8327 Petrella Lane also. Had family members that have lived on Petrella Lane for over 30 years. And the one constant with the Spring House is that it's steadily grown. Every few years, there's another project to expand. And so I just, I can't believe that this would be the end of it. Giving them that much more property, I think is just leading to future growth, whether they have plans drawn up or not. You've heard people refer to Kate. She lived in the property, she was the last occupant of the property that they purchased. They wanted to tear down the house. She moved because she hated the Spring House. She hated the noise, she just couldn't put up with it. From my understanding, she sold her house to the high school, hoping that it would never fall into the hands of the Spring House. And yet, they got it anyway. I think the culture that people drive individually is ridiculous, you know? What do we need, another 125 people driving themselves home from bar? Draw your own conclusion. Draw your own conclusions, but I think the culture should change, whether than just, instead of just giving them another 125 parking spots. It's just, it's a nuisance, it makes the neighborhood ugly. Those trees absorb a lot of noise, but what I learned last year when the Bengals were in the playoff run is I can still hear every touchdown, and their cable is 10 seconds ahead of mine, so it removed a lot of it, and I had to change to antenna. It's just one of those things. Inside my kitchen, I can hear them cheering. And it's just, I mean, you know, my father said, you can put up with it now, but only because those trees are there to absorb the noise, give you a little space. If it gets larger, it's just going to be tacky, it's going to be an eyesore, and it's going to reduce the value of a nice place to live. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Carla Shieldenek, 8309 Petrilla. I'm on the corner, and like my husband said, I did a lot of landscaping. And so when we bought the house, it was overgrown with honey saw, it was terrible. So when we tore it all down, Kate was like, "Oh, I'm exposed." So I planted all kinds of pretty stuff, and I actually had to, I dug a whole big drainage ditch in there, a dry creek, because it is so mucky. And that's my concern, water, is because if you, it is truly mucky, because I've gone back there and dug out flowers and all kinds of stuff, and it is just muck. So if you cover that up, I know you've got a retention pond, but where's all that muck going to go? And is it going to, you know, go into my dry creek that actually wanders between Kate's and my property? And then it runs out to the street on Petrilla? That's my, one of my big concerns, and the likes. That's it.
Thank you.
I live at 8401 Petrilla. My name's Jill Kenny. I don't really have a whole lot to add, but there is some concern, in my opinion, with taking down the amount of trees that they're talking about, because also, there's a lot of wildlife that exists within all that wooded area. I live further up, you know, further away from the Spring House, but I'm still on the same street, and we get a lot of deer and just different, you know, wildlife that come through there. And I think if you start condensing and taking away their area, they're also going to be, you know, cornered into a smaller compaction of area, which can cause more accidents. And when you talk about expanding, you know, the parking lot, once again, you're bringing in twice as much people, twice as much light, and if they do go ahead with the license for the gambling, then, you know, when they're generating more business, it's also probably going to, in return, create longer hours, that they're going to turn around and stay open. Which makes sense, because, you know, if you're making a lot of money, and you want to make more. So, you know, you can turn around and change your hours, you can also change your building size. I just think if you give too much, then it's going to just keep on going and going and going, because if they're able to generate from different angles, then when is it going to end? So, that's all. Thank you.
If you can shield and maybe throw down, I'm directly behind her. I mean, directly. So I'm just walking through the building in my mind, thinking, okay, they're going to have gambling areas, that's okay. But have you been there recently? Where are those machines? Where is that gambling going to happen? There's no room in there. And if there's no room in there, where are they going to do it? And if they want that big of lot, wouldn't that be the ideal place to put some gambling machines or whatever they do? I'm just saying you need to think about that. Walk through the building and go, where is that going to be? Again, I don't want to hurt his business. It's a wonderful business, wonderful guy, but we've all been around long enough to know that stuff happens.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Jo Sprague. I live at 8316 Petrilla Lane. I'm across the street from the residences that are being affected by this. Two concerns that I've come to think about is, when you get a property, and I love the Silver Spring House, there's no bad things that I want to say about it, but the expansion, I'm worried about what happens if they have some kind of, it's a restaurant, it can have fires. And if you get that many people, extra people, that are parking in the restaurant at that time, where are the, I'm just concerned, because if they have some kind of issue like that, how are they all going to get out safely? That was one of the concerns I had. Also, since I live on Petrilla, we had, we had a lot of parkers that used to park on our street, and now it's, you can only park on one side, which is working out very well with Sims Township. But I know Cincinnati Hills offers parking in their parking lot when they're not in school. I know they are allowed to park there during the summer. They have an extra parking lot that's down Snyder Road that accommodates parking. It's not that far of a walk. So there's adequate parking other places. I know that there was concern about people crossing the street, but in the summertime, at lunchtime, we don't know what the traffic patterns are, and that may be part of the study, is to check into the patterns of, how the parking will affect the patterns of the street there. Also on Snyder, on East Kemper, and on Petrilla. So those are the two concerns that I had. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing nobody, we will close the public hearing at this time.
Am I allowed to respond to some of these comments from the public?
You can respond to us regarding some of those comments, so if you'd like to come up to the dais.
If that's the case, then I'll be up to call open air to follow up questions about the person.
The public hearing is now closed.
Well, you should not have him up to.
No, we will ask him questions, and he will respond to those, as well as Mr. Snyder or anybody else that we direct a question to.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I might suggest not closing the public hearing if you're going to hear more from the applicant. It would probably be more appropriate that that happened within the public hearing.
Okay, Jeff. Duly noted. We will maintain the public hearing.
Okay. So I do have a few questions based upon what has come up. And let's start with the retention basin, and what its current dimensions are, and what the expanded dimensions are, and how you anticipate the retention basin will satisfy the drainage for the entire parking.
Yep. If you go to, if you don't mind going to the plan that shows the grading plan, I believe it's...
On the wrong way?
Yeah.
Clarification, is it a retention or a detention?
It's detention.
So it's not, there's not...
It's not holding water. Yeah. It holds water for a specific time, and then it releases it slowly. So if you look at the northwest corner, or excuse me, east, northeast corner, you can see the existing detention is there, kind of by the dumpster area. And that is basically going to be expanded, kind of lost aside of it.
The whole thing is sideways, so...
Yeah. There you go.
Yeah. There we go.
So, does anybody have a laser pen by any chance I could hold it?
It's up here, right?
Yes, right there. You got it.
Is that the old one, or the proposed?
So it's the old one that's going to be expanded to the north to account for the additional impervious surface. So, when actually, we're going to be improving the drainage, and the reason being is because currently, that existing lot, all the drainage kind of flows back to the northeast corner, and it kind of, you know, comes down with the neighbors' water, kind of comes down to a V, and then all flows there, whereas instead of the northern neighbors. So instead of all that water flowing to the northern neighbors, it's going to be collected by curbs. There's going to be curbs and gutters that are going to stop the water, and then it's going to be collected and funneled into the detention basin, which then routes it through pipes out towards the south. So it's actually being diverted the opposite direction from the current flow now. So it will be improved, the drainage, and we can even throw in a French drain along the northern property line to connect to the detention basin for either further aid in diverting the water that happens to flow on that berm. So I just wanted to address the...
And where is that going to be diverted?
In the detention basin, and then out towards the south. No, it's all gravity.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, this is not an open house or a question and answer. This is a public hearing. All comments need to be directed to you as the chairman of the board, not to each individual person in the audience.
Sorry about that. So yeah, the water would be all diverted towards the south, through the detention basin, would not be, need to be pumped, and it would be, it would be all gravity, but...
So I think to paraphrase what you've said, what you've stated, once the, should this be approved, and once this is all designed, particularly if we add a French drain stipulation, any water that is on the property owner's property to the north will originate on their property. There will be no water that will be coming. And is there any groundwater or springs or anything underneath there that is adding to the muckiness that was...
There could be. I'm not aware of any. We'd have to see in the soil boring logs to see if there was any of that.
Another question that was raised during this discussion was with regard to the existing concrete wall and privacy fence. I assume that's going to be taken down?
It would be taken down, because yeah, because then that allows us to be contiguous with the expansion of the parking lot.
And Brian, we don't have any control over hours of operation or intended use, do we?
They are not asking for a change of use currently. They, that's not what the request is for tonight. The license for gaming wasn't mentioned in their letter, they're not asking for that. That's not what you're considering. Hours of operation, I would defer to Jeff. I've seen it both ways. I've seen commissions add hours of operational limitations, and I've seen jurisdictions lose court cases when they do that.
Jeff, do you have anything to add?
I would agree. I've seen it happen both ways. I've seen hours of operation imposed, and I've also seen them challenged and defeated.
Okay. Is the, even with your newly revised plan, as eight less parking spots, is there a minimum number of parking spots that you think that the restaurant and bar need in order to maintain normal operations during its current, under its current configuration?
Three parking spots that they can possibly get.
And is the, is it anticipated that all of the arrangements with CHCA and the condominium, office condominium, and all those are going to be maintained after the expansion?
I can't speak for the CHCA, but the office condominium, yes.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
No.
Do you have any questions?
Am I allowed to address anything else that they said, or is it only if you ask me a question?
If you'd like to respond to anything to us, tell, give us additional information.
Just, and then, one of the things that was mentioned was safety, people walking across, traffic patterns and stuff. Just to kind of clarify that, we are not adding any more curb cuts to the roads, and a matter of fact, we're currently taking away one to make it safer. So we only have three access points. Two that are going to be right in the property of the Silver Spring House, and then one through access easement through the office condominiums. So all the traffic, that's why we want this parking lot, is because it'd be safer, because all this will be in the parking lot versus outside the parking lot. People trying to park elsewhere, walking across busy streets. So it is for this reason that safety is of utmost importance in that.
So the southwest entrance that's currently there is going to be removed? Is that the idea?
Yes. With this current building, construction, it is being removed.
Okay.
It's gone.
Yeah, actually, it probably is gone already.
It is.
And then as far as...
No, no, no. That one is staying, this one's gone.
And as far as lighting concerns, we do comply with the zoning regulations for lighting, and all the fixtures have to be shielded, and to not provide any glare to the neighbors, and I believe Mr. Snyder can verify that. And then as far as worried about putting in our building, it was my understanding that Brian Schneider told me, if we combine these properties together, then I would not be able to put a building on that parking lot. Am I correct in that, Mr. Snyder?
The plan that's before you does not show a building that's correct. There would not be, the zoning resolution does not allow two businesses to exist on the same lot. The proposal calls for consolidation of the two properties, which will prevent a separate business from operating in a separate building. And then any other structure, other than a parking lot as shown, would require public hearings, again, with notifications.
So if you've got yours?
Any expansion or change to the outside of the building would require a public hearing with notifications.
So if it's the same business, on the same...
Again, Chair, I answered the question, and I'm not speaking to the audience, I'm speaking to the commission.
One other concern was fires. Because of the expansion of the property, it was required by the building code to put in fire sprinkler suppression system, so that entire building is suppressed with fire. It has all the adequate egress points, as required by the Ohio Building Code. And then regarding the trees, if any tree happens to be, you know, that's planted new, happens to be dead, it will be obviously replaced, and it's also required by the zoning code that we do so. So those are the only things I just wanted to mention, if there's any other questions you have for me.
I did have one other question. I think one of the gentlemen talked about the stability of the fence and assuring that it maintains its full upright and lock position.
Absolutely. Yep. So we would put concrete piers in the ground in order to do the main poles, and we plan on putting up a structurally secure fence. Ohio Building Code regulates anything that's over six feet. This will not be over six feet. So Ohio Building Code will not regulate it, but we still use standard best practices to keep and anchor those fences.
And are you planning on putting any kind of irrigation for the trees and shrubbery?
That I don't know. I'd have to ask the owner on that one.
Okay.
No, it isn't. Now, we, in the summertime, we take hoses and drag them out to water all the plants and shrub.
Mr. Chairman, can you have a gentleman identify himself for the record?
Mr. Smith, would you please, sorry, state your name in the...
Joe Smith, 83, 86, Weller Road, Cincinnati, Ohio. Yeah, we, in the summertime, we take hoses out and roll them back in every night. We do that every morning, and in the evening as well. Normally twice a day in the summertime, because we have to water all the flowers, and some of the plants we plant every year. So I think, I don't know if you guys see those every year, when you come by, everything's pretty well maintained.
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I very briefly, speaking to the commission, the statement's been made by Mr. Snyder that, well, they didn't reveal in their application anything about the gaming site. The question... didn't reveal in their application anything about the gaming site. The question remains, you are the zoning commission for the township. You and the applicant are bound by the zoning code. And now that it's clear that they have, and I'll give you the information if somebody wants it, but at the end of last year, they were issued a license by the Ohio Casino Commission for, to be a sports gaming host. The question is, is that even permitted under the zoning code? Because if it's not, they don't need all of these extra parking spaces. They may need a few, but they don't need as many as they have applied for. Mr. Chairman, I have fifteen seconds.
Sure.
Twenty. They have seemingly unlimited parking at the office condos. They've got their restaurant parking. They've got really unlimited parking at CHCA for their employees now, but they've got access to the lot. There is a court order as to that lot. It's not with Simms Township, however, and it's not being enforced. I've talked to the dean, the head of school at CHCA, and he will permit them as much parking as they want in the South Snyder Road. If this goes through, that whole area's going to look like a car dealership. There's parking lots all over the place, and cars all over the place. That's why I think it should be rejected.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Jeff, what is the standard on casinos and sports betting and all of those in our zoning?
Been around for weeks now. I guess what I would say to that point is, if the township determines that a use is being operated on a piece of property that's in violation of the zoning code, there's already a process in place for that. We'd issue notice of violation, and we would have to follow that process. But you, as I understand it, at least, just from what I've heard tonight, we don't have any evidence that that use is taking place on the property. And so really, the question before this board is the application for the rezoning. In the event that in the future we find that there's a non-permitted use taking place, we would deal with it like we would any other non-permitted use anywhere else in the township.
And just to be clear, your consideration of this request has no bearing on whether or not that type of use is permitted in a retail district.
Do we know, is it permitted in Simms Township?
Like Jeff said, this is the.
I can tell you, I would agree with Mr. Burke. When you look at the list of permitted uses in E District, there is no permitted use related to whatever we're calling, whatever we call this gaming or gambling parlors. But what I would also tell you is, and a quick look while we were sitting here, I don't believe that's a defined term in our code at all. So that's something that would.
I suspect the reference is just for.
Have to be clarified.
Sports betting kiosks. And I think Kroger's at Harper Station has a similar license and whatnot. But again, I don't know. My recommendation is don't use it.
And it's not, that's not the question before the commission.
Okay, so we will now.
I would not, I'll suggest that you don't use the term "close the public hearing." You can start the deliberation, but I would not close the public hearing until you're actually ready to act on a motion.
Okay.
We'll now deliberate.
May I ask one?
Once you close the public hearing, then it's an issue to open it, and you're bound by time constraints as to when you can act. You can't continue it after you close the public hearing, because you've already closed it.
Once the public hearing closes, then you have to, you're bound to make a decision. There are time limits that, and for this body to act as well as to send it to the trustees. And we've had that issue in the past.
Okay.
We'll deliberate.
All right, it's my thoughts. I struggle with cases like this, because I read the material. You guys run a great business. I think everyone agrees. Your decorations are amazing. The food is excellent. The free popcorn is amazing. And you're a great neighbor. And this is kind of where you say the "but." But my concern is, is the integrity of the neighborhood, and the intensity of the proposed parking lot. I mean, it's primarily residential. I didn't realize CHCA had owned the property originally, I guess, and you got it from CHCA. I wasn't aware of that. But to maintain the integrity of the neighborhood, and I give deference to the residents whose property adjoins or abuts, because they deal with on a 24-hour basis. And as I'm reading the material, thoughts that enter my mind were, okay, are they going to see headlights? Well, after I hear everything here, I don't think headlights are a concern because of the burn in the fence. Are they going to hear car doors opening and closing? Are they going to hear people talking as they exit the vehicle? Are they going to hear people talking as they enter the vehicle? And that I don't know. But again, I kind of focus on the residential aspect of the neighborhood. There were references to the land use plan. I guess the zoning commission, or the regional planning commission had declined because it had, didn't comply with the land use plan. And that's where I'm inclined to give deference to the patrol residents, to the regional planning commission. In its current form, no. I mean, is there a portion that is acceptable? Maybe, in terms of size and whatnot. But I've wavered back and forth, and I may waver again, depending on what you said.
Okay.
I agree. You don't want to stifle business, but the character of the neighborhood would change drastically. I think if it were approved in its current format, I could see some compromise of maybe pushing into the property, maybe a third of the way, and get yourself maybe an extra thirty parking spaces or twenty-five. But to lose all of those trees, I just couldn't possibly approve of that myself. I think it would just change the character of Petrilla, the whole street as a whole. It is an older street with tons of mature trees. This is an older neighborhood. It still has electrical wires. I mean, it's got character, and it would change the character. So I'd be willing to, at a future meeting, look into a compromise where part of that property was used, and the rest kept as a natural area. I would consider that, but I couldn't approve it the way it is.
Yeah, I struggle with this as well, because, you know, on the one hand, I think the restaurant has been a good neighbor for the totality of Simms Township. I think we have certainly had you come before this commission on many occasions over the last three to five years. So you're certainly familiar with this process. And, but I agree with you. I think that deference does have to be given to the adjoining property owners. And I think that the zoning with which I was a member of the Land Use Planning Commission, you know, we certainly gave the community an opportunity, including the, all the property owners here, to make recommendations and opinions to change property districting, should that districting have been an issue with anyone. And at no time that I can recollect, did anyone from the restaurant come before us and make recommendations to change that property. So to do it now, when it's outside of the land use committee meeting, seems like that opportunity has already passed. And I think that, I really do believe that it is important to maintain greenery, and just although I've never been back there, or counted the number of trees or dead carcasses in the property, you know, I believe it to be integral to the, you know, to the community and the adjoining properties. So that's my thought. Would anybody like to make a motion, or?
Mr. Chair, if I could, just on a procedural thing, just to follow up on a question that was raised, I do just want to make sure everyone is clear, based on the bylaws. Absolutely correct. This is a five-member board. It's absolutely correct that three members here constitute a quorum. And the quorum is absolutely, you can, you can do business and you can take action, as the commission. I think the question was, and that just is what I want everyone to understand. It does say that "all actions of the commission on zoning matters shall have the concurrence of a majority of the members present, with a minimum of three affirmative votes required for zoning approval." So I think that was, that was the issue. So that if you were going to recommend approval, it does take three affirmative votes, and that would be all three of you.
And to be clear, we will make a decision, an up or down vote tonight, and that, potentially, and that, that recommendation will be carried forward to the trustees, who will make the final determination.
Correct, correct.
So this is not any of your last bite at the apple, so to speak. We are.
You are recommending.
Recommendation, an advisory committee. We are not the final say-so.
Based on that, would you, would you recommend that the commission consider an approval vote, so that a yes is a yes, and a no is a no?
Yes, that was going to be my, my last point was, whatever the commission, I would, in this circumstance, I would generally recommend that you frame your motion in the positive to approve or to recommend approval. And for that very reason, because then a yes means yes, and a no means no, instead of being confused. And it does say, by the way, that the failure of any proposed amendment to receive enough affirmative votes is then considered a recommendation against the amendment. So I would suggest that you make it in the affirmative, see how the votes fall, and then that will determine what the recommendation is to the trustees.
So we would propose to approve.
Yes. Right. If that's what you want. Right.
Do you want me to take a stab at it?
Sure. Go ahead.
Okay. And so how do I bring the initial, I propose?
So.
There's a motion on page six, the page that was just handed to you, I believe. If you just remove the part about land use consistency, at the end of the first sentence, it starts to recommend approval of, and that has the framing of the question.
Okay. So I'll recommend that we find, that we approve the adopted land use plan.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's not the right.
That's not the one, the recommended motion?
It's the, it's the second recommended motion. It's on page six. I believe that's the page that was handed to you.
If I, if I might, it's, in that recommended motion, I think what the suggestion is, well, unless, of course, unless, of course, you want to find that it's consistent with the adopted land use plan, which.
Oh, I see.
It is not. I think that it's just to start with after that part, where it says to recommend approval of case Sims 2023.
Oh, okay, I see.
If that's, if that's the desire of the commission.
Why don't you just start here?
Okay. I'll put a motion to recommend approval of case Sims 2023-01 Silver Spring House for a request for a major revision to an existing EE planned residence with subservient retail district and a zone amendment from A residence to EE planned residence with subservient retail, subject to the standard covenants for planned districts.
I'll second.
Mr. Eggman?
No.
Mr. Kessler?
No.
Ms. Coughlin?
No.
Okay, based on that vote and your rules, the failure to get three affirmative votes means that this will be presented to the trustees as a recommendation against the amendment.
Thank you very much. Old business being done, new business also being done. Any administrative matters? Anyone, anyone?
No.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Second? Mr. Eggman?
Yes.
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
Ms. Coughlin?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.